You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 19th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. For more information on this meeting, go to www accesseslaporte county dot org.
All right, we are calling, calling to order the Michigan City Common Council meeting for April 19th. Today is Tuesday, April 19th, and if everybody would rise for the budget lesions and a moment of silence. Before we start the roll call, I know there's an addition to the agenda with just an oversight, and we had nominations last council meeting for the Sustainability Commission, and we will have the vote this evening if there are no objections from the council. Ms. Nile up on the roll.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Matt?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Present.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski? Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Jagus?
Present.
And Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
All right, thank you. And we won't have approval of the minutes this evening. And we'll do it at the next council meeting. And they're completed, but just she wanted to go through them one more, one more time. They're pretty lengthy, so we will do that at the next council meeting. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Yes, Councilman Paul?
I would like to make a brief report on the workshop that we had a week ago. That we talked about the quiet zone, and we also talked about the quality of life. I believe that Mr. Don, Councilman Don Przewlinski was there, Gene Simmons, Councilman Fitzpatrick, Councilwoman Angie Nelson, Deitch, and Councilman Brian Dabney. And I, I think that, I don't, I don't know who else was on on now. But we, we talked about, we had some input from the public. Lady from Michiana, Shores, I think, Mr. Mike Nolan from Nick Doug gave us a lot of good information, and also that I think that we learned some things on how to conduct a study, and how long the study takes, and that we, we learned about the firm that can conduct and that specializes in these studies. So I think that they said a cost of study could cost up to $100,000, depending on what you want to get done. But I think that overall, that people did understand and support what we were talking about because it's a quality of life issue for a lot of these neighborhoods. So I think we'll have a good discussion this evening on, on that resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other committee, standing committee reports?
I would just like to provide a current status regarding the bylaws for the Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. I have provided all that information to the council attorney to review so that we can move forward of implementing the new approved bylaws to be in compliance with the MUNICO. However, there are three openings, three seats available that's still not filled on the social status. Two still needs to be appointed by the mayor and one by the council.
Thank you. Any other standing committees? All right, Finance Committee.
The Michigan City Finance Committee did not need due to that there were no claims from the Riverboat. And the only thing that I'm sorry, from the Riverboat nor the Boyd Development nor EFT. There was one billing that we did receive, and it was for Harris Law Firm in the amount of $3,095 amount due. If Ms. Hoffmaster can confirm or not, have this been paid yet? Or you're still waiting for approval by the council? Or from the Finance Committee? Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. So we just need to make sure we confirm that how the invoices are submitted for our council attorney. All right, thank you. So there are no, no claims on the, no docket. So we will move on to our first resolution. Before I do that, I'll take privilege here. I just want to thank Councilman Don Przewlinski for presiding over the meeting last council meeting in my absence, so I appreciate that, thank you. Ms. Nile, first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, supporting the submission of a notice of intent.
All out of order. I'm sorry. I jumped over a whole, a whole page. Thank you. I, I know, I know, I'm sorry. I'm trying to speed through this faster than, than normal. I'm making up for, for last week. My apologies, I'm suffering from a sinus headache here, but thank you for allowing me this privilege. So reports of special or select committees, are there any reports of special or select? All right, reports from the mayor or any other city officers or departments? Any petitions?
There are no petitions.
Any communications?
No communication was received.
I could have just skipped all over that. All right. All right, first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, supporting the submission of notice of intent to establish a railroad quiet zone along the South Shoreline owned and operated by the Northern Indiana commuter transportation district for all grade crossings from Carroll Avenue to Sheridan Ave. And supporting necessary funding for grade crossing improvements. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Tillman.
Are there any comments by the sponsors, from the sponsors? Hearing none? Comments from the, from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none? Comment online? I can't see who. No comments? Oh, there he is. Mr. Kalavich?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. I think anywhere there is a railroad crossing, the train has to blow their horns. I'm gonna go back maybe about 20 years to the early 2000s. The Royal Road Crossing, we, well, when the federal mogul Anco plant was still open, we, we had a real tragic incident. Well, there was a carload of Macedonian ladies, they, they would carpool in from Arrowville. One morning they were coming into work, work overtime, like the five in the morning. And the carpool got hit and struck by the South Shore train. The one of their supervisors right behind them and pulled them all out of their minivan. The other thing is really, since October, I was a passenger on a train when it, when it hit, twice when it hit a vehicle. Last September, I was going to a sporting, sporting event in Chicago, and the South Shore train, it hit, it hit a vehicle, the Porter, Lake County Line Road and Highway 12. They, they get backed up there, there's like a 20 yard gap between the South Shore tracks and the, the freight tracks that service the steel mills and the Rand track runs on. And the car got trapped in between, and then it hit the car, there were four people in the car. The one man had to get airlifted, and the, the family, the other three family members in the car ended up walking away from it. It was really bad, and we had to, we had to sit there right between the, the Ogden Dunes and the Miller Station, stop for an hour for another train to come and get us and take us to Chicago that day. And then the second time was in December, I was coming home from another sporting event. The, the, the train leaves Millennium Station at 11 o'clock, and it was a really windy night, and the, and the South Shore train, it ended up hitting a, it ended up hitting a Metro Service vehicle at 111th Street by the Pullman Rail Museum that they have now. The conductor got out checked, there was no, there wasn't no, fortunately, there wasn't nobody in the truck, and the train was undamaged, and they, the train continued on to Indiana. The first thing everybody does, they shake real bad when it hits a car. I want to say, I read the safest place to sit when you're riding the train, always sit in the back of the side for the last car of the train. I've read that's the safest place to sit. Because if the train derails or hits something, you have a chance, best chance of walking away unhurt. And don't sit in the back of the, very back car because it's a possibility that the train might get rear-ended by another train. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Comments from the council, I know we received some documentation. Yes, Councilman Paul?
At this time, I would like to present a amendment to the resolution as adding a whereas at the very end of all the whereases. That whereas the Common Council supports the administration moving forward to appropriate money in the 2022, oh, in 2022, to initiate a comprehensive study on quiet zones throughout Michigan City for all the appropriate railroad crossings.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Paul Przewlinski, and, and second by Councilman Don Przewlinski. And any questions or comments? It's a, it's a quick sentence, so Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
I'm trying to read this, digest this real quick.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Ms. Nile, now for the amended version of the resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, supporting the submission of a notice of intent, establish a railroad quiet zone along the South Shoreline owned and operated by the Northern Indiana commuter transportation district for all grade crossings from Carroll Avenue to Sheridan Ave. And supporting necessary funding for grade crossing improvements. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Mr. Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, now I'm just finally wrapping my head around this, this last whereas. So we're talking about moving forward to appropriate money, how much money? This is, I mean, I know it's gonna come out in, in terms of an additional appropriation at some point, but it says the Common Council supports the administration moving forward to appropriate money in 2022 to initiate a comprehensive study on quiet zones throughout Michigan City. And how much money? So.
Mr.?
Interesting, I got this, and had two minutes to.
Councilman Paul Przewlinski?
I just responded that, that I think we can leave that up to the administration, and I didn't think it was appropriate to dictate that specific amount because we have to look at how many intersections, I mean, how many crossings, and where we're gonna start. Because there are a lot of crossings. I went out and did a survey today, and I think we're gonna have to make a determination on which ones will make the most impact, the quickest on doing this in the neighborhoods. So I, I believe that to put a price tag on it right now is not appropriate. That we'll determine that at a later time.
Any additional comments from the council?
Yes, Councilman Don.
Thank you, Ms. President. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Paul Przewlinski for having the workshop. I think the council learned more about these quiet zones. We also learned where the money was gonna come from, because in a resolution, it didn't say where the money was coming from. It's coming out of the ARP money, funding, and and in fairness with, with the amendment, the Councilman Paul Przewlinski just put forward. And the same thing I was saying back in the workshop, that we have to be fair to all the neighborhoods in the city. If we're gonna have quiet zones along the whole South Shore route, from, well, I should say from Carroll Ave to Sheridan Ave, that's not the whole route in town, but at least for those crossings, then I think we should look at all the neighborhoods and all the citizens in Michigan City. Because there are people that live close to tracks all over town, they hear train whistles. So why should we appropriate $840,000 out of the ARP funding and not take care of the other folks in town also? And take, if we have to, $200,000, $150,000, whatever the cost of the project, or not the project, or whatever the cost of the study may be, go ahead and take that money out of the ARP money right now, and just, and just be done with it. So I don't know, you know, the Councilman Dabney, yeah, that's a great question, you know, how much is it gonna cost and where's, you know, in that? But, you know, we don't necessarily know the exact amount, what it's gonna cost. I don't think it'll be a whole arm and a leg, sort of say. But I think it's well worth the effort, so that everybody in Michigan City feels equal about getting their crossings looked at and their neighborhoods looked at also. Thank you.
Councilman, Brian Dabney?
Yeah, last comment. The reason it rang in my mind like that is because I was thinking that possibly we can do this in the next, next year's budget. We have appropriations that come out for, for operations and other things like that. This could possibly be fit into next year's budget as well. We were talking about money coming, using ARP funds, and that, that was thrown around quite a bit. That was just one possible funding solution, is ARP funds. But I don't know if that was set in stone, as that, what we would do. So I started thinking as a possibility, we can come to the budget or go in the next year's budget as well. So that process is about to start within the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I want entertain.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Przewlinski. And a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, the amended resolution passes. Ms. Nile, first ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance number 4598, commonly known as the 2022 Salary Ordinance to Increase the Annual Salary Position Within the City of Michigan City and to Create the Position of Grant Writer. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jagus, and Mr. Matt.
Are there any comments from the sponsors? No comments from the sponsors?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had an amendment I wanted to offer to this, some ordinance, and it was a place in front of everyone, as you see. And that would be removing the line item, Fire Department Deputy Chief, in amount of $2,824, I guess bi-weekly and annually, $73,426.33.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have an amendment to remove the deputy fire chief in the amount of $73,426.33 from the proposed ordinance, and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I ask why that one was triggered, just explain to me, please?
No, so hold on, hold on, select, let's go through the process and then we can do the questions. All right, so we have a first and a second for amending the resolution, I mean, the amendment to remove the fire chief. Are, are there any, do we go to public comment first? Attorney Harris, or, yes, we do. So we'll go to public comment first, and then we'll come back to the council comments before we have a vote, and that's when questions can be asked. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? And state your name and address. That's okay.
Mike Jezneski, I'm not a city resident, but I am a member of the Michigan City Fire Department. I am actually one of the deputy fire chiefs, and I'm just curious as to why that line item is being removed from, from the budget.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Comments from the council? That's Councilman Brian Dabney.
Yeah, I was looking at that, and the deputy fire chief right here with the $73,426, I thought, in my mind, coming up with this, the only reason that it could be removed or would be removed is because it would be put in the position where it'd be making more than the fire chief. Judging by what we're gonna be talking about tonight, with the fire chief, would be put at $80,871. So I'm, I'm baffled as well as why this one is being removed.
Okay, so this, what we have in front of us is proposed increases based off what the current salaries are, and also to be retroactive to January of this year, which would be basically, in a sense, undermining all the work that Finance Committee did last year in the budget process. And to answer the fire chief's question, the reason that one was removed, because that's the only one I agree with. So in the event that this does not pass, that one can be brought back. If that answers your question. Thank you.
Any, any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Matt?
So I'm, I'm just hoping that the way it was described isn't the way I'm kind of hearing it, that the ordinance that's up right now is to retroactively correct all of the people who did not get salary increases that were outlined by the study. And to put them in line with the few people who did get salary increases through the individual study from the Finance Committee. And, and so that we don't, so that we can fix the one person as the fire, fire problem and not address the rest. That is the, my fear is that we were setting up a scenario into which we can address one as opposed to addressing all that weren't addressed in the first place. So that, that's the way I think I'm hearing it, and if I'm wrong, you know, please correct.
Okay, so that's kind of inaccurate. Everyone did receive some sort of increase. They were not the total amount that was proposed to us during the salary, during the budgeting process. We went through and adjusted them appropriately. Everybody receives, for the most part, some part of an increase, except probably, with the exception of, I think, the council, I think everyone got some part of an increase. The one with the fire chief is because of a situation that came out of the fire negotiations and the way the contracting was ultimately decided upon. We felt that this was something that needed to be addressed. The rest of it, I don't agree with, and I don't think it should be something that we deal with right now. We already went through the budgeting process. If these want to be addressed again, that process is about to start again, as Councilman Dabney just alluded to a moment ago. So, and to take these and make them retroactive just doesn't seem feasible at this time. So if we were going to go through and make these increases, or some portion of these increases, I think it should be done at the budgeting process, and it should go through with the 2023 budget. Thank you.
That's kind, thank you. Councilman Brian Dabney?
Real quick, for the people who are watching this on Facebook, the people out there in the public, I just shared what we're looking at on my Facebook page, I just made it public. So you'll get a chance to see this same spreadsheet that we're looking at right here. I explained all the columns across the top, A, B, C, all the way through, I believe it's G, or H. So you'll get a chance to see exactly what I'm talking about. So on my Facebook page right now, I just posted that public. Once again, if we talk about waiting for the budget to try to bring up our, our city workers, and this is only going 75% of what the salary study said that they should be paid, not 100%, 75%. And so we're trying to make the raises fair and equitable, which I believe, and the reason I'm, I'm on this and brought this back up, is I didn't believe it was done fair and equitably before. The percentages of raises that we got from the salary study ranged all the way from some people getting 97% of the suggested raise to people getting just 11% of the proposed through the salary study. So they said they do, they did their due diligence while that process was going on. And, but it ended up being where, you know, people, they were asking, well, who sits in that position? Things of that sort. But this is not fair and equitable at all. So this is what's trying to be corrected at least somewhat, bringing it up to 75% of what the salary study said that they should have. And that would be retroactive, going back to the beginning of the year. If we wait for the budgets to do this all over again, that would not be active until we bring up the 2023 budget, to start at the beginning of the year. So, and the way I see it, and I hear the mumbling down there, don't really care. But the way I see it is, we're playing with people's livelihoods here by paying for a salary study that says this is what they should be paid based on like-sized cities, like-sized responsibilities and duties of other people doing these same jobs. And a couple of people actually went way over the 75% threshold that we're looking at. We're not gonna bring those people back down, but we're trying to fix some of the people who are down at, at the bottom of the, the scale here. For some reason, they were shorted. And, you know, I'm standing up for the people who are salaried, workers who were, I feel were shorted. They can still vote the way they want to vote, but that's how I feel about it. And I'll say that to the, the end of time here.
Any additional comments from the council?
Yes, yes.
I think that we need to curtail the audience, we're not at a sporting event here. We're at a public meeting. I, I will say that we did do what we were asked and actually told to do. Because when we started the budget process, and we saw the amount of raises that, the amount, the size of the raises, it kind of bewildered a lot of people. I know that I was taken back, I was, I'm on the Finance Committee, and we discussed it at our meeting, and actually, the mayor, I don't have the exact quote, but said something to the order, do what, what you think you should do then, at that meeting. And I think that a lot of people that are standing here remember that. I certainly do. So with saying that... I feel that individuals did get a pay raise. And they also got an additional pay raise to their base on the twenty-seventh pay period that we took out of the budget. And tried to save the city um. Uh, money. That I believe that twenty-seventh pay period costed the city close to seventy thousand dollars. So. I believe that that position did get an extra pay period. All those, all these that are on this piece of paper sitting in front of you, except. The mayor and the uh clerk's office. Got a twenty-seven pay period last year. So what that means is they could variate in their amount of money they received. And some people, I mean, according to their salary, got some sizable increases. So I think that the budget process is starting. And that we should address, we can go back and address it on the during the budget process and that. I think these positions are well paid. And I think if you ask how much that. Where the crying all started at that position, if you ask. But that in that individual or those individuals, how much they got on their vacation sellback? And their sick time sellback. I believe that they they uh excess of uh over a hundred thousand dollars last year. So they did get a pay increase, plus they got an additional twenty-seventh pay period at the end of the year. By executive order by the mayor. So they did get pay raises last year. It may not be exorbitant like they thought they were gonna get. But I I thought that we tried to do and uh save money for the citizens of Michigan City. But. I guess we're just gonna keep spending and spending, even though it's somebody's salary. I think that people are well compensated. In their positions because those positions, you work straight days. You got all the holidays off. I mean, it's a it's a, it's got its perks to it. So myself. Some people can talk about it was unfair, it wasn't right, it was. It was what it was, okay? And I'm not supporting to give anybody additional money because they got. Or they received their monies last year. Thank you. So we gotta get, we, excuse me, if I may. That the facts people can say, but that is the true facts. And I think that when people say that they didn't get a raise or they didn't get enough for a raise. I just don't. How many years did people keep on getting raises? When other people that were working in the general public went without raises? For years and years during the recession periods of the nineties, a lot of people. And I was one of them, nine years without any pay increase. So I'm not begrudging anybody anything, but there's benefits. Having and working for the city of Michigan, for a public service. Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, then Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus, because they have not spoken. And then if anyone else has um from the council would like to speak, they can at that time. So counts. Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Um. I am also in the agreement with Councilwoman Fitzpatrick and Councilwoman Paul Prispolinski. I am currently the finance chair and also was on the finance committee during the budget year last year. Um, in making those decisions, as I said, when there was a workshop held in regards to having open dialogue in regards to the salary increases. I um, I addressed the question in regards, how did they derive? I'm not saying that the um, the vendors incompetent in the information that they provided to us. But comparing Michigan City to our neighboring cities to bring us um to equal pay to what they're obtaining. I took into consideration, looking at the job descriptions for the city of Michigan City, that was originally done from the study. And I compared it to what was current and what is what is present, which the last one was done in twenty nineteen under the um prior mayor. And as I said before, the only thing that I observed that was different was some of the language, which was. Changed around, but as far as duties and responsibilities have not changed. We've asked um in prior meetings, well, are they doing um cross-training? I can justify, that could be justified. I can understand then, if you're being cross-trained, that will warrant a possible pay increase. But it also took into consideration why some departments or individuals pay is different because you have classifications. You have comments, you have packs, you have executives, you have polls. So depending on your classification determines your pay salary as well. And that information is what's not being explained or shared to everyone. All we see is dollars and. Okay, that's what everyone think that's what it's supposed to be, but that's not how it should be taken into consideration just because we see dollars. It has to justify, if I'm doing, if I'm excelling in a position. And you see that I'm excelling in this position or taking on more duties and responsibilities. Then that's a conversation to have with your administration or your department head to ask or request for a pay increase. But to just arbitrarily say, because this is what our neighboring cities is paying their employees, which they have the income. And the economics in those areas to do so, we don't have that here in Michigan City. And they may actually be actually doing those additional duties to justify that pay increase. Also, I did ask the mayor during that workshop, because um the executive order was done in my absence when I was ill back in December. To the twenty-six to the twenty-seven pay period, I posed the question. If you were able to do that executive order for that, and if this is something that you truly stand by and it's for your employees. You're putting it back on the council. Council and the finance committee has made a decision. We voted on the budget for twenty-twenty-two. Why not do another executive order? Because you have the right to do so. So I put the question back on the administration. If we do not pass this or it should not have gotten to this, you should have done an executive order. And we wouldn't be having this conversation and everybody would be happy.
That's Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus.
I I have so many notes, I don't know where to start, but um, what I hear is that when they. First of all, this was done by a professional organization, Wagner, Irwin and Schill. They are, they do salary studies. As a matter of fact, LaPorte is now doing it. I believe the county's looking into that. Doing a study, which means they compare similar jobs across many different municipalities and they come up with what you should be, what you should be paid. It's not an increase, it's what you should be paid at that rate, period. The interesting thing was, like, it didn't cause cost anything for the budget because all that money was already budgeted. It's in the budget. Did not increase the budget at all, because the way the budget was passed, all those salaries were included. So it did not take anything away from anybody to pay these people. And the fact that, you know, everyone should be paid what they should be paid, why is that an outrageous thing? What if you had heard that, you know what, they studied what your salary is supposed to be and you're gonna get, you know, what everyone else is getting? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Only some of the people are gonna get it. Some of the people are gonna get more, a few people are gonna get less. Because it feels like it's too much. The study was done to figure out how, what what actually is a fair amount. And we're not even bringing everyone up to that fair amount. It's seventy-five percent of the fair amount and we have the money in the budget to do it.
Councilman Michael Matt.
All right, I hope I don't go over my three minutes here. Um, so I've got, like Ms. Ziegus, I've got notes and uh. On top of notes here, but uh, it comes down to five Ps, I guess. Back in my previous business day, we used these terms, but. Not all of them, because one of them is politics, but process, people, performance, precedent in politics. The last two I added, precedent in politics. Um, a previous administration, a previous council, two, three councils ago, they did this study. Every council, the same way we have to uh. Deal with the studies and the precedent that was done with double track and a lot of other things previous councils done, that they laid the groundwork for that. And that's that study um was meant to be like an SOP, a standard operation, a guideline for future um councils. To look at if since it didn't pass then. Um. Now, performance, so what I what I heard someone speaking of is, you know, your performance warrants a raise here and there. Um, that those are true. Performance measurements for raises are are always everywhere, every year people get those. But these are baseline process-driven salaries, what the study did. So the city spent a lot of money. Paid a corporation to come in and do a lot of studies on each individual position. And what it seems that we're doing here is taking the precedent that was set. And to create equity amongst all of these various groups within the city. And and we took the study and we snatched out two or three based on, you know, throwing the precedent out of the study that, you know. Trying to keep everybody in the same ballpark. And uh, I know it just sounds like we're not using process and to to me, process is more important than anything in good government. That's that is exactly why uh government around the United States is looked at as is. Because each decision now comes on each council, each individual. There is no consistency in process. And taking into consideration the previous uh councils, you know, consistency, so we can go forward. So what we're doing cherry picking, you know, I think it's nine, ten, twelve people. How, it's not that many people on this list. And the dollar amount is not insurmountable. Um, so if we're not driven by a process. To make decisions, that process is just how the council votes and the next council, they can vote and we can just tear down things and bring them up as it. As we see fit. Um, I think we'll continue with the what we've been getting out of government. Uh. We really should put this to bed. In a process-driven way with the study that we already have, that was already based on. Uh, fairness and equity measures across our spectrum of job titles. And across our spectrum of job titles compared to other people with similar job types. And it's just fascinates me how we could take those complicated measurements and, you know, just come up with our own. And throw the precedent, the process and the people to the uh whims of, you know. The makeup of the council. Um, hope I made sense.
Mike, am I allowed to comment again?
Presidential privilege. Yes, uh, Councilman Bryant Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, the the difference between the salaries that were given versus the the salaries of of bringing everybody up to the seventy-five percent. These are salaried employees here in town. Um, it's about one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, as Councilwoman Ziegus pointed out, it was not a cost issue because this was actually set in the original budget. Um, at one hundred percent. And at that time, when we received those budgets, it wasn't what's called a zero budget where uh revenue equaled expenses. This was revenue was way over uh the expenses when the budget was made. So there was wiggle room in there as well as. Um, you know, this being budgeted for at one hundred percent. So um, when it's trying to be made a cost issue, uh, that's out the window. It was not a cost issue from the very beginning. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out and um, I'll leave it at that.
It's Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Okay, uh, yeah. So this is for for the public knowledge. Uh, the way this works, the mayor proposes a budget to us. It's a proposal. He has an idea of what he needs to do, what he wants to get accomplished. He gives it to the council. There is a reason, it is nine of us. It takes nine of us to make this decision, five for a majority. So four people could say, we believe this, five people say, we don't, and that's how it goes. It's about votes. So the council is, the will of the council is what's in place right now. But what also is in place right now that I think people are overlooking and what the the public can't see. People out there on Facebook or people that'll be watching this in uh later recordings, we have the administration here, the mayor's here, his chief of staff here, a lot of department heads are here. And I want to ask this question, and if anyone can prove me wrong on this, please come to the mic and I will, I will be quiet and I will accept that I was wrong. Through that process, we gave you one hundred percent of your operating budget. So we were looking out for what's in the best interest of the city and making sure that you have everything you need to do your jobs effectively. And serve the citizens and the residents of Michigan City. Now, in regards to your personal salaries. The previous administration did a study. I don't think that salary uh study bear any fruit. The the salaries were not approved by the council at that time. This council was presented with it again. We went through it and we did give some increases. And they were not just arbitrary numbers that we just came up off our head. They were percentages based on. The uh information that we were provided as far as what the job titles are, the classes of uh positions and and all that uh stuff. So we looked through that and we made decisions based off what we had in front of us. So to sit here and act like we're depriving somebody or something, or we're not doing our job as stewards of the citizens of Michigan City. Which is our job to make sure that that money isn't mismanaged. Every dollar isn't gonna get spent for what you want to spend it for. That's never gonna happen. Since when do you get everything on your Christmas list? It doesn't happen. So I'd like to pose this second question. What's more important, the ability to do your job effectively or how much money you're taking home? So anybody can answer these questions at any time. Like I said, many department heads are here. Please step to the mic if you have something to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? So I I wasn't here, thank you. I wasn't here um when this was presented, but um, I was kind of shocked because. I know that there were multiple conversations about um the fire negotiations and um. And working through the the deputy chief um that that salary issue. And I know there was some correspondence back and forth and I know Councilwoman Tracy Tillman can share that that. Um, there was a finance committee meeting and there was some back and forth stating that. You know, this position would just wait until we go through the process again, but then all of these were brought back. I will say wholeheartedly, I didn't trust the the entirety of that study. You know, working across, you know, private industry in in other sectors, utility. And looking at the different uh cities um and the responsibilities of some uh, you know, in the span of control. And I said that before, that I I didn't totally agree with it. Um, you know, the process uh that we had um last year. Um, you know, there were a lot of people that were, you know, making comments and things of that nature, but I didn't truly trust um that. But I also feel that um, bringing this back at this time, when we were talking specifically about one position. Puts us at um this contentious back and forth. Uh, angry conversation, um divisive conversation amongst city employees. Now, a lot of the department heads said specifically last year, just take care of my people. Take care of my people and I will be happy. Take care of my people. Then then it was to the point where there were angry people within the city hall walls, you know, people weren't speaking to one another. And it was just like, take care of my people. As long as you take care of my people, I'm good with that. Municipal governments, again, we talk about a baseline, but there are no uh annual reviews. You can be the worst employee in Michigan City and still gonna get your raise regardless of the of anything that you do. Uh, in in most cases, uh, because that's what we do. We just continue to give raises, give raises. Regardless of what your performance is. We just continue to give raises, give raises regardless of what your performance is. And I just think the timing of it, again, I didn't agree with all of the salaries. Um, I don't agree with the grant writer, just point blank, I don't. I don't agree with the hiring a grant writer. I believe some of the best grant writers want contract work. They're not full-time employees. That is just something that I know as a, a grant writer, they're not looking for full-time benefits. We can hire someone who says they're a grant writer, then all of a sudden they're not, they, they're trying to figure it out. Best grant writers are usually contractual. So I don't even agree with that position, being a full-time position. You, you contract that out until you find someone who is worth their weight in gold. And those people, um, are out there and are in La Porte County. So I just want to make those comments, um, because I, I think that, I, I don't agree with doing this right now. I, I don't. And, um, I, I think that, um, we're still on the amendment. So I would like to get through this amendment so we can move forward, um, to third reading. But I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you. All right, Councilman Don Przybalski, and then we'll get this vote going.
Uh, just one quick comment is that, and Council President Deitch just said it, uh, bringing this process back at this time, and I said it at the first workshop, I believe we had on this, that it's, it, to me, it's causing decisiveness, again, within the city employees, between the employees, the city council, whether you agree with, whose ever opinion up here. And that, and that's not good. We went through the process. We went through the budget process. We've always gone through the budget process. And when that budget is set, it's set. Now, whether Councilman Dabney doesn't agree with the raises, which is apparent, and that's fine, he has the right to do that. But once you set your budget, your budget is set, you don't come back in the middle of April and say, hey, we need to give raises now, because I don't think this is right. You know, we do this process every year. We're going to start this process in another three to four months. And we can take a look at things then, and if things don't seem justifiable now, we can make them look the way, apparently the way they should look. If everybody, you know, if the finance committee and the council agrees with it. So that's where my position is, uh, right where I'm at with this is just to leave things where they're at. Some people may not agree with that, that's fine. We've been through this process. To me, a lot of good points being made on both sides. But all we're doing is starting animosity, animosity all over again with the city workers. And at this time, we don't need that kind of, uh, personal feelings between people and between workers. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman, um, Gene Simmons.
Yes, my thoughts and feelings on this proposal, you know, for you, Councilman Dabney to come back with seventy-five percent, you know, I, I'm wavering on that. But, uh, I'm totally opposed of throwing in a grant writer. I just can't see that. And another, and another factor that factors in for me is this study is what, three to four years old? And we're still, it's almost obsolete, I would think. Give me a, give me an, an updated study. And, and yeah, it isn't, we're not talking about dollars and cents. And we're, was, we're back talking about the process as well. Why can't we stick with the process? You know, the mayor, you knew the process and you had a, Councilman Tillman gave you the wherewithal to approve the whole thing. Why didn't you do that? Take the council out of it, don't put it on us.
Yeah, so, uh, yes, mister.
From the mic, please.
Exactly, um, are you done, Mr. Simmons?
I'm done.
Awesome. So moving forward, um, um, this is a vote on the amendment to remove the deputy chief from, um, this amendment. And, uh, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick did, uh, give his explanation for that. And, um, I would move for the, uh, move to the roll call.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Przybalski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons? Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Przybalski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Nay.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
All right, Ms. Nyla, on the amended ordinance by title only. Second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance number four, five, nine, eight, commonly known as the twenty twenty-two salary ordinance to increase the annual salary position within the city of Michigan City and to create the position of grant writer. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jagus and Mr. Mack.
Any additional comments from the sponsors? Yes. Councilman Matt.
Just wanted to take an opportunity to speak on the position of grant writer. I know other cities have that. And, uh, depend on, depending on how those things are utilized, I just don't see how. And, and I think it's a, an old nineteen eighties version of economics where it's cheaper to farm everything out as opposed to have an expertise in your own house to do things. Um, at this point in Michigan City's history, we, we've got a lot of, uh, committees, a lot of, uh, individual groups. We've got our sustainability things, uh, we've got the social status things. It just seems, and, uh, transportation, you know, a, a lot of things that could be upgraded. It just, and, and so many dollars are sitting in the, uh, the, not to build back better program, but the program that was just passed with the federal government. It just seems like instead of waiting for the whims of each of these individuals to find, a grant that may be sitting out there, uh, that if we had our own grant writer, that eighty thousand dollars could be like a hundred times over if each of these little, each of these committees, each of these people with very disparate jobs that have nothing to do with each other could come and say, hey, HUD has this. Hey, Transportation Department has this and point to somebody and have that same person for eighty thousand or whatever look into it, as opposed to each of them saying, could you please give me some money for a study? Could you please give me some money for a study? Now, if I'm looking at it wrong, you know, I'll, I'll eat it. But in my mind, there's millions of dollars in this USA sitting, sitting around waiting for somebody to say, hey, we can, we can, we can take that, we know what to do with it. And if you got somebody on your team that can actually articulate that, it seems like we get more of that money as opposed to, you know, trying to find a corporation to skim off of that in the first place. But I, I think a grant writer is very important and, and one day I believe we, we will get one.
Councilwoman Jigus?
Uh, yes, if I can chime in with the grant writer idea too. I know it's our right to like find somebody, but we're not doing that. And number two, not only to write the grants, but to make sure we're complying with the, because, you know, once you get the money, that's, it's not over. Then you have to make sure you qualify, you do all the qualified paperwork and submit everything on time. So I think that would be maybe, shouldn't be called grant writer, but grant facilitator, because that person probably should take care of all of the compliance.
Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, just on the, uh, grant writer. Uh, first of all, and I believe in the ordinance, it states that the grant writer's salary is like forty-four thousand dollars. But then, after I inquired more, you know, is that, uh, is the pension in there, is the FIC in there? Well, that wasn't included. So it's not forty-four thousand or forty-five thousand, whatever it stated in the ordinance. It's actually somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-eight thousand dollars on what this grant writer is going to cost. And then I asked the administration, why don't we look for a contractor uh, to do that work instead of having a grant writer here in city hall doing that? And, you know, did you know what the cost of a contractor grant writer was? Uh, no, uh, and that, that's been, I don't know, month, month and a half already? And I haven't heard a thing. I don't know if there's been any investigation into a contract, uh, uh, grant writer. But I mean, if, if, you know, I, I guess if I was the administration, I'd be, want to be doing some footwork, trying to sell the program, trying to get somebody, but I haven't heard anything. So, you know, I, I'm totally against a grant writer, not unless possibly it was a contracted grant writer and we could get one at a negotiable price. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? That's Councilman, uh, Bryant Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, um, when all salaries are, are put out in salary ordinances, none of them actually include the, uh, insurance and all the, it's, it's always just the, the salary. So just to clarify, you know, any salary that you see with the city, somebody's making fifty thousand dollars, they're getting, what is it, eighteen thousand, I believe, seventeen thousand for insurance if they're full-time and everything like that. So salaries are always, uh, put out there with just what they make, you know, into their, their pay. They don't, we don't add in all those other, uh, benefits in that when it's proposed, put out there as a salary for one of our, uh, workers. So just wanted to clear that up because I know that we're, uh, that number eighty thousand came out and whatever it may be with, it's like forty-six thousand and then plus those, those benefits. And that's how all salaries are advertised. So just so the, the public understands that.
Madam President, yeah. And just to clarify my point, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that it wasn't forty-eight thousand dollars. It's seventy-five thousand dollars with the additional eighteen thousand. So what you read in the paper is not actually what the actual cost is. So that's what my point was. I understand what Councilman Dabney says. I understand that. I just want to make sure the public understands what we're actually paying for here. It's not forty-eight thousand, it's seventy-five thousand.
Thank, any other comments from the council? That's Councilman Paul, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Tracy Tillman, I didn't see your light.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Just quickly, um, to add on to Councilman Don Przybalski, uh, was in that workshop as well. And again, I can concur that we have not received that information. We even inquired about, um, the administration reaching out to the other departments that actually benefit by using grants so that we can get an idea if it would be conducive for us to hire a full-time grant writer.
Thank you. Councilman Paul Przybalski.
I'm in an agreement with, uh, a lot that was, has been, uh, said already. And I believe that what our council president has experienced in this profession and I take, uh, under advisement her opinion because that's how you have to look at people's expertise to make your judgment. So I think that we do have, uh, somebody in-house that has experience with grants and maybe, no, we're not utilizing it, them to their fullest potential. So I don't like the way specifically how this grant writer was thrown in this ordinance because I think that grant writer, another thing, how this was trying to be pushed on the council, slipped through, let's get it through on, um, I thi, I think that grant writer should have been brought to the council on a separate issue. And, uh, I agree with, uh, a lot that the council president said about the, uh, decisiveness, the, uh, tit-for-tat confrontational attitude because I'm certainly not throwing any tats, but when somebody says something, I'm not going to, I'm, I'm going to approach it and, uh, debate it. So I don't think we need this grant writer at all. I, I really believe that we, we can do something, but we should contract out or should, here's what I'll say, let me reform and correct that statement. I believe in good government. I believe in transparency. And I believe that we should put out, uh, a, a proposal for professional services. And the reason I say that is because just like at our, recently at our Board of Works meeting, they approved a, uh, which is all relevant, they approved a contract to purchase cars. I was opposed to that and I, and I'm still opposed to it because I think that those vehicles should have been put out as an open bid, a solicitation of bids. So I, I just think that the way things are going is not fully transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paul. Um, any other comments? If, I will allow, I'm, I'm, I will allow this tonight since we're, we're doing this. But after this moving forward, y'all, we need to stay on track.
Yes, I just,
Thank you.
I, don't quote me, but if I can recall during our budget hearing, that was one of the requests, but it was voted down. We struck it out.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Um, so this will be held over for, um, third reading. Ms. Nyla, first ordinance on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending ordinance number four, six, one, four, to establishing salaries for the Michigan City Police Department through the calendar year twenty twenty-two.
And this is introduced by?
I'm sorry. Just by Mr. Don Przybalski, Mr. Paul Przybalski and Mr. Dabney.
Are there any comments from the sponsors?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Don Przybalski.
Uh, and, and being the, uh, being the chairman of the, uh, Labor Negotiating Committee, uh, we received a uh, notification from the uh, FOP negotiating chairman today. It went to the city attorney. I hadn't had a chance to, uh, to see it. I don't think Councilman Paul Przybalski has, nor Councilman Dabney. Uh, I, I did, uh, Councilman Dabney did tell me that it didn't have anything to do with financials uh, for the contract, but it is still some type of verbiage change. We haven't had time to review it. So what I'm going to do is make a motion to, uh, table this ordinance until the Labor Relations Committee can sit down with the city attorney and we sit and review what language changes have been made until it's totally accepted. Yeah. Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Przybalski and a second by Councilman Paul Przybalski to table, uh, this amendment ordinance, uh, the third reading of amending ordinance number forty-six fourteen until, uh, the Labor Negotiations Committee meets. Ms. Nyla, on the vote. Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Point of order.
Point of order, but I'll allow it because she has, uh, pertinent information to share.
Yes, Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. I, um, I just wanted to let you know, the change in the language has absolutely nothing to do with the salary ordinance. So be, be, I just wanted you to know that before you voted to table it.
Thank you. Oh, we voted to table, so the roll call.
Mr. Don Przybalski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Przybalski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? Mr. Mack?
Nay.
And Ms. Deitch?
Nay.
We have five in favor and four opposed.
All right, this will be tabled until the Labor Negotiations Team, um, meets and we will, uh, get past it, to table it. So we will, um, bring this back after the meeting. Um, and let's make sure that this is by the next council meeting. Um, and let's make sure that this is by the next council meeting, if possible. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Nyla, uh, the final ordinance on our agenda for this evening. And, uh, go ahead and read it and then I'll explain it.
The final reading by title only, annexing real estate approximately hundred forty-seven point two acres situated between Paz Road, Johnson Road, and U.S. Highway twenty, La Porte County, Indiana, declaring same to part of the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Simmons, and Mr. Don Prispolinski.
And this was published in the Herald Dispatch on March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And there was a formal public hearing, um, held on April fifth of twenty twenty-two. Are there any comments from the sponsors?
One quick comment. So at our last meeting, we did vote to rehave, uh, second and third reading, but, uh, we were advised by our attorney because it was an, uh, annexing, um, ordinance. We had to wait the full fourteen days before we could approve it. So that's why it's back on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments from any of the sponsors? All right, com- uh, comments from the public? Yes. And state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Sergeant Anthony Edward Lewis, United States Army Infantry Retired. I live in the, uh, Weatherstone subdivision on twenty. This is the first time I've ever been to one of these council meetings. I just haven't been able to, um, get here. As a matter of fact, even with this meeting, I was trying to do a Zoom Bible study call because of the conflict, but I wanted to see what this looks like. I'm on the ballot, May third, for precinct chairman.
Um, sir, are you, um?
I have a question.
Are you speaking on this particular item?
Yes. I wanted to make sure you knew who I was.
Okay.
Um, what I believe I just heard say is that the city wants to annex an area that is right next to the precinct that I'm supposed to be operating out of. I just want to know whether or not Cool Spring Four is connected to the area that's being referenced in this amendment. Because.
Yes, I believe so. Um, there is a, an attachment that was presented, uh, with this, uh, particular ordinance that highlighted that area. It's the area right there where the Family Express, um, is on Highway twenty that goes back to Paz Road where the high school is and the apartment complex. And it travels west, um, down Highway twenty, all that cleared area.
So this territory then is going to also become a part of that district?
This will become a part of Michigan City.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for speaking tonight. Any other comments from the public? Mr., is it Mr. Dabney? Yes, Mr. Kalavich.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I want to echo the sentiments the senior council member, Paul Prispolinski, said this last day. Don't give one penny of tax abatement to this mystery company. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other comments online? No. Okay. All right, um, any additional comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Prispolinski, a second by Councilman Paul Prispolinski, Ms., Ms., uh, Nyla on the vote.
Uh, Mr. Don Prispolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prispolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, this passes and we're on to new business. So, um, our first point of bus- point of new business is the mayor's requesting the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Jonas Zimmerman as a member of the Michigan City Historic Review Board. And the term will begin immediately and expire, um, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Um, we have a, a, um, motion by Councilman, um, Paul Prispolinski.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Don Prispolinski, uh, Ms. Nyla on, well, is Mr. Jonas here online? He'll be a great member. Uh, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prispolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prispolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, we're moving on to unfinished business. Um, the first vote that we have, the mayor's requesting the advice and consent of the members of the Common Council for his appointment and reappointment of Mr. John Haynes as a member of the Michigan City Court Authority, um, with appointment continuing and will expire, um, April twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Is, is Mr., Mr. Haynes online or here? All right, would you like to say a few words or you're good? All right, all right, um, so, um, Ms. Nyla, I don't know if you guys, did you, um, do, you didn't have, you didn't nominate or do anything last council meeting? We just vote then.
Uh.
All right, Ms.
It's advising.
Yes, advising consent.
We just need to vote this evening.
Yeah, we could have done it the last one too. All right, um, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prispolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prispolinski.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, and the next one, and then we have one more. Um, we have a vote for, um, the, the mayor's requesting advice and consent on, um, appointment of Ms. Belinda Lee as member of the Michigan City Social Status of African-American males, replacing, um, Mr. Lester Norvell. And that appointment will expire March first, twenty twenty-three. And I don't think I've seen Ms. Belinda.
No, she's not here.
All right.
She was at the last meeting.
All right, great.
She got up and spoke and introduced herself.
All right, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prispolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prispolinski.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, and, and now we have to vote for the sustain- Sustainability Commit- Commission. Um, with two nominations, we have Ms. Kimberly Williams and Ms. Nancy Mouldenhour. Um, would you like to say a few words?
I won't be long because we, um, Andy Jans Davis and I made a detailed presentation, um, last council meeting. But I wanted to give a couple of updates. Um, I want to continue and to serve on the Sustainability Commission to support home and small business solar panel installation. Since last time, Solar United Neighbors has announced that they will be organizing a round three for this program. Also, I want to promote sustainability engagement with residents. And I want to let you know that Carbon Neutral Indiana has found a one million dollar grant opportunity. We have submitted a letter of interest. What this would do would be to include opportunities for our underserved community to actually engage in carbon neutral, um, footprints for their homes. We'd be able to install some solar panels on lower income homes. We may be able to, um, choose a nonprofit to install solar panels on also. This is just a letter of in- interest. We have not submitted a formal grant, so I wanted to share that. Also, I want to continue to partner with local nonprofits to train individuals in solar installation. Last time I reported, we now have eight certified installers who have all of their OSHA requirements and also their, um, certificates to do that. Since then, two people have been employed as full-time installers. So, um, the other thing is I want to be able to leverage the Solsmart Silver Designation that we just received last month, and that's in the planning stage right now. So I'm asking for the support and the vote of this common council that I be able to continue serving on the Sustainability Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms., um, Ms. Nyla, um, on the vote. So you'll just state Williams or Mouldenhour on the vote.
Ms. Tillman.
Mouldenhour.
Mr. Dabney.
Mouldenhour.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mouldenhour.
Mr. Mack.
Mouldenhour.
Ms. Deitch.
Mouldenhour.
Mr. Don Prispolinski.
Mouldenhour.
Mr. Simmons.
Mouldenhour.
Ms. Jacobs.
Mouldenhour.
And Mr. Paul Prispolinski.
Did you call me?
Yes, I did, right now. Paul Prispolinski.
And thank you for doing so well. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, so, uh, we've heard from, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Tillman on the additional positions that we need to get filled. The other thing that, um, that's not on here that we'll talk about is the youth commission now that we've, um, updated the, the, um, ordinance. So we'll, we'll get that back on track as well. So now I will open it up for public comment. Um, comments from the public, step to the mic, state your name and your address. And you have three minutes, um, and feel free to come on up. And then we'll make sure we check online. I keep forgetting about online.
Uh, good evening. My name is Nick Pollak. I live at two-eleven Anne Street here in Michigan City. Uh, some of you may know me as my, uh, capacity in my day job. I'm a representative for construction workers in, uh, Indiana. However, tonight, I'm here to speak to you on behalf as a taxpaying citizen of the city of Michigan City. Uh, in lieu of yesterday being Tax Day, uh, we all know that there's only two guarantees in life, death and taxes. Um, I wanted to bring to light, uh, some charges that were filed last week against a contractor in La Porte. Um, this contractor, uh, from what I read in the affidavit, uh, is my belief that they were misclassifying their workers. And I think if I remember the numbers correctly, they had thirteen independent contractors, but had seventy people on a safety sign-in sheet. Now, you know, I'm not a tax person, um, but something doesn't add up there. Um, the reason I'm bringing this to your attention tonight is that same developer, I believe, is going to be doing a project in Michigan City in the near future. Um, there was a study done ten years ago. I forget who it was and I forgot my notes at home, um, but I can get that information if need be. Ten years ago, a study was done on tax fraud in the construction industry alone. The state of Indiana, at that time, was losing out on four hundred million dollars a year and lost tax revenue. The United States was losing out on twelve point four billion dollars, and that's just in the construction industry. So I'm here tonight to ask the city council of Michigan City to please be proactive on these upcoming construction projects. You know, the double-track project, I think, is going to be a boom for Michigan City and all the construction related that's going to go with it, um, is going to be great for the city. But I think we need to be proactive and make sure that we're being legitimate contractors in here to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, Brent Tisdale, three zero one, Friar Row. Um, something I've heard repeatedly at these council meetings is that we continue to do studies that don't get acted on, whether by the administration or the council. Um, I don't know where the money comes from for these studies, but if you're proposing to do another study for the quiet zones and we're not going to act on these, please don't spend the taxpayers' money that you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred thousand if you're not going to act on it. Now, if you want to, if you want to move forward in our economic development, let's put the money towards something that will bring in businesses or train people up so that we can continue moving our city forward. But if you're just going to continue ordering studies after studies and not doing anything about them, then let's just save the money and do something else. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Don Briggs, three hundred Madison Street, Michigan City. I'm precinct chair for MCO five. I agree with the comment about, um, wasting taxpayers' money, but it seems the sense of this, um, council that we're going to move ahead with, uh, implementing a quiet zone in Michigan City. For the folks of MCO five, I'd like to say, oh, yeah, do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. I'm here because, um, some residents wanted me to speak about an incident. Um, Laura Lazzenski, um, she had a son that was attacked at the Michigan City Police Department playground. I don't know if anybody's seen what was going on. Young man was shot with BB gun in several places, including in his head. Um, I said this over and over again, I don't mind you guys giving the police anything they want, but at some point, we got to get something in return. Another incident at the playground where the police department is at. How many more of these incidents are we going to have and nobody's holding these people accountable? We got camera, I hope we have cameras everywhere, but it seems like nothing's getting done about it. So city council, come on now, we got to do something now. We just can't keep letting this go by and by and not, and keep our eyes pretending like it's not happening. Color, race, politics, religion, none of this should take a place, should have any role in this. This is about right and wrong. Each one of us, each one of you out there, including myself, we all been elected to office to take care of a, a certain position or duty, and we need to start doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Ern.
Evening.
Good evening.
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I just got one agenda I wanted to mention. I spoke with Mr. Don Prispolinski after the school board meeting when they voted a property tax on this. The public needs to attend. There was, there was very few people at that meeting. And they just passed that ordinance a hundred percent. Not an ordinance, but a to buy some school equipment. And a lot of people found out about it through the paper afterwards. But I did call Mr. Don Prispolinski. I tried calling you. Didn't get any response, but those meetings are important too. I mean, they pertain to all of us for what they vote for over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ern. Any additional comments from the public? It's online. Yes, Mr. Kalavich.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and I have another one of my special announcements to make. And I got a prepared statement to read from the Michigan City Police Department. The Michigan City Police Department family would like to congratulate Lieutenant Jeff Pietrowski on his retirement from the Michigan City Police Department. Lieutenant Pietrowski was hired on March eleventh, nineteen ninety-one and served the citizens of Michigan City for thirty-one years with the highest level of pride, compassion, and dedication. His thirty-one years of service, Lieutenant Pietrowski was awarded five Exceptional Service Stars, Life Saving Award, Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence, Thirty-Year Award, Seven Letters of Commendation, Chicago Police Department Joint Operations Award, and was named Michigan City Police Officer of the Year in twenty fourteen and twenty twenty. Lieutenant Pietrowski served the department nearly every way over the course of his career as a field training officer, SWAT team member, SWAT team coordinator, traffic motor officer, Special Deputy United States Marshal and Shift Commander. Lieutenant Pietrowski also served his country for twenty-nine years, retiring from the United States Army National Guard Reserves in twenty twenty at the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. United States Army, National Guard Reserves in 2020 at the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any additional? Okay, all right, comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
I have my timer off.
Oh.
That's why I'm fixing it.
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Dahlia Giegus.
All right, um, yes, so, in celebration of Earth Month, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Sustainability Commission, along with a lot of different partners, are having Earth Month Extravaganza 2022 this Saturday at the Public Library in Michigan City. It's a free event from twelve to three, all ages, there's crafts, games, information, animals, and more, there's a live animal show at 1:00 PM. I believe they have rehabbers coming with, uh, some animals, so that would be very interesting. So, please attend, free event, twelve to three PM this Saturday. Also, uh, the Tree Board will be giving away trees on this, this Saturday, you know, for Arbor Day, and also May 7th, the first day of the farmer's market. So, if you wanna come by the farmer's market and pick up a tree or two to plant, uh, please feel free. Thank you.
Councilman Brian Dab.
Yeah, real quick, just wanna alert the public, uh, there's some that know about what's going on, and some who are still, uh, in the dark on this, but, uh, Saturday in the Michigan City Public Library, I was at an event, uh, put on by just transition of, uh, Northwest Indiana, and what we're trying to do, or what they're trying to do is make people aware of what's happening over here with NIPSCO, um, when it leaves our community, when that, that building is gone, there's something in the ground that's, that could be getting into our water, um, it's called coal ash. Uh, look that up, very toxic, uh, coal ash. And so what we're trying to do is make awareness to everybody that, that lives here in Michigan City, that we want NIPSCO, we want IDIM, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, somebody to pay for cleaning up one hundred percent of this coal ash. Don't leave some behind here that could be toxic to the residents here in Michigan City, especially those on, on the west side. Um, they showed a video of it, water crashing into, uh, the retaining wall that's out there right now, breaching the retaining wall, and it could possibly be putting some of this coal ash into the lake. Um, this is going to be a big deal, uh, happening here in Michigan City that we really need to be aware of, um, and, and really put our attention to, because this could be dangerous. Uh, when NIPSCO leaves, we need one hundred percent cleanup, um, of this coal ash, and not for them to do, I believe it's only required by the state, I think it's like ten percent, um, to be legal. Somebody will buzz my phone here in a second, I'm sure they're watching me say this right now, but we want one hundred percent. And the only way that's gonna happen is that the public is gonna have to really put its foot down and make some noise, um, dealing with corporations. What's the first rule of, of any corporation? Uh, maximize shareholder equity. Uh, so, anything they would have to pay out, they don't wanna do that. Um, I was on a call where I had a representative from IDIM on the call, and it was going back and forth for twenty minutes, and I just broke into the middle and said, hey, tell me what's stopping this from being done? What is stopping one hundred percent cleanup? And he started talking about economic feasibility and everything like that, um, so I translated to everybody, they don't wanna put up the money. Um, so, this is gonna be big, and, and I hope everybody starts to pay attention to this, because this could affect all of us. And I'm sure some of the other council members know about it as well, and, and I'm sure they're gonna be on board, because we actually did a resolution where all nine of us were, uh, in favor of them one hundred percent cleanup, but this is still moving down the tracks, and we gonna have to make our voices heard on this one. Get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Yes, Councilman, uh, Don Przewlinski.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Pollak, I just wanna thank you for coming this evening and speaking about the, uh, issues that are going on in the construction trades. I know that after I read that article in the paper, uh, about what's going on at the banks, I believe that's the name of the, uh, development in La Porte, and a lot of people seem to be very, uh, surprised by it, and didn't think it's the right thing that's going on. Uh, I called, I reached out to, uh, Mr. John Carr, who's the, uh, Indiana-Kentucky Carpenter's Union President, Representative, whatever his, uh, correct title is, and I asked him to be here tonight, he couldn't make it, so he sent Mr. Pollak in his place to explain the issues that took place over in La Porte, and are taking place across the, the state of Indiana with these non-union scab contractors that come in, take the jobs, don't do the jobs right, uh, are getting paid by cash, not having to pay taxes on what they make, and everything else that goes along with that, that type of activity. And I just wanna make sure with all this proposed development that's gonna be coming to Michigan City, that the workers that are doing these jobs, and the general contractors that are doing these jobs are doing everything properly, they're paying their workers properly, and the workers are getting a fair hourly wage, day in and day out, and this work is all being done safely. Because if I find out about a contractor not doing it, doing his work properly, I'll go to the job site myself, and I'll just tell them to shut it down, and, you know, leave town, and then we'll see, you know, what happens after that. But it's not right, it shouldn't be happening, and it's not fair to anybody that works hard day in and day out. Okay? Union strong. Yup?
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Don. Any additional comments from the council? Councilman Paul Przewlinski.
Um, I, I would like to thank Mr. Pollak for bringing that to forefront and, uh, about what I'll call it, what it is, scab labors, and that we definitely, as being a union person for over fifty years, we need to really, uh, keep track of that. Um, and I will be in touch with you, because, and it's, it's a very, it's an economic thing, and it's a job security thing for people who pay their dues, follow the rules, and are on the list. So, also, I would like to say about the NIPSCO is that it is, um, a bad scenario on this coal ash, and, uh, people talk about NIPSCO shutting down, and, oh, what a great boom this will be for Michigan City. It's not gonna be any boom. As long as that coal ash is in the ground, it's an undeveloped site. So that's, that's the big thing here. Um, but also, I disagree with, uh, recently, or what was said tonight by, uh, our city controller, and after reading the letter in, uh, update, that, uh, this is contractual language that, that they cited, and the changes that they are talking about making will have an impact on our probationary fire, uh, our police department hires. So it is a monetary issue, and, uh, we're gonna have to revisit that. What I, what I can't figure out is that the Board of Works on Monday's meeting approved a, approved a contract, at, at their perspective. So I'm, I'm gonna try to figure out how we're gonna unsnapfu this napfu. So, and that, that is one of the things that you need to base your, uh, performance-based salaries, and what was talked about earlier, on performance-based. So, I would, I would also like to say that, we had a workshop last week, and we talked about the quiet zones, and Councilman Don Przewlinski and myself were attacked for saying that we were grandstanding in an election year. Well, I gotta tell everybody that's here in the general public that nobody was grandstanding, that we were trying to bring it to the forefront on make, given the areas of Michigan City that need quiet zones, doing something about it, and making the quality of life better for the residents and, uh, the neighborhoods that they live in, be, because some of these crossings, like, I'll give you an example, since I went out today and did an inventory, that on County Line Road at Earl Road West, that's a, not gate car crossing, but lights, that they start blowing their horn there, and they keep blowing it all the way through town. And the reason I say that, that I was doing some manly duties in the kitchen there before Easter, and I stood in the kitchen, I live like, I don't know, five blocks away, and just heard that horn blaring, and blaring, and blaring, and I said, we gotta do something about this. And that's why I, uh, offered, and I talked to the president of the city council, I, we conferred today, and I talked to some other people, and, and that's why the resolution was put in there. So, it's trying to build common ground and consensus to do something good for our neighborhoods, and make people's homes more valuable. It'll have a, uh, economic issue to the people in those neighborhoods, and people just think that, well, you know, it's been going on for so long, and what, no, we need to do something. We got a lot of crossings that affect a lot of residential areas in the city of Michigan City, and it's not, it is, I think that what was brought up through the different crossings we were talking about in doing that quiet zone, I think it really brought it to the forefront. But, I, uh, this evening, I wanna thank everyone that sent prayers and goodwill to my family, and I just wanna say that my grandson is recovering at one hundred percent, and that his injury was, uh, amazingly medically, medically corrected. And I, I put that out there because, you know, it's a family issue, and a lot of people were sending us good, good thoughts, but I, I just wanna say that through this experience, you know, things happen for a reason, and you just see the goodness come out in people when you have a tragic family event, and I just deeply wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Um, any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Mac.
So, real quick, I want to, uh, thank Chief Campbell for an outstanding job on the incident that, uh, happened. I mean, we're, we're internet famous in Michigan City, um, for not just the incident, but the manner in which the incident was handled. Um, and in this day and age, we all have to think sometimes, uh, because, uh, the, 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 and I'm, I'm speaking of the incident where that young man was tased on the street, and, uh, there was, there were, uh, plenty of, uh, speculations on what happened and when the chief was gonna do this, and, and this is the second time the chief has, uh, stuck some serious professionalism into a situation that looked like it could burn down Michigan City again, like Lighthouse, uh, or it sounded that way. Uh, my wife works at a bank, and they closed, I mean, a lot of businesses closed, uh, and, and closed business for that day, in, uh, preparation for the unknown. And, uh, you know, with the way the internet, I, I feel for the young man. I mean, uh, he, he didn't have to, uh, be put in a situation to where now he, he's the, the butt of, you know, cruelty on the internet for the manner in which Michigan City residents, Michigan City adults, conduct themselves. Uh, most of us know some simple rules of, uh, making judgments, so there was, there's certain people I wouldn't let my kids stay all night with, they've got behaviors. Uh, the chief has been, uh, I just say that to say that when you're looking at an incident, when I, when I saw the incident and the allegations, I just, myself, couldn't think of five of Chief Campbell's officers truly believing that they could do what was alleged, and just nothing would happen, and though, and that, that with impunity, these people can walk around under this direction of this police chief, and do what was alleged with a serious thought of no repercussions. I just don't think those days exist in Michigan City. Um, so, before we, you know, just, sometimes we need to think and allow the professionals that are in positions that know about it to, to do their job, and, uh, this is twice, like I said, uh, he did the Lighthouse Mall, and this, that, uh, his quick thinking, and he was on vacation, quick thinking and quick release of the tapes, and it proved that our officers, uh, handled that, uh, exceptionally. So, uh, congrats to all of the police, uh, people that were in that, and I, I hope we can begin to speak more highly, highly of our own town. Um, there's incidents everywhere, uh, and I've said this many times before, I've lived in big cities, Michigan City does not have an issue remotely of what cities have, but sometimes we make our city sounds much worse than it is. Um, and, and somehow, we've gotta mitigate that and create a better sense of community and a better sense of, uh, the good things that are going on in the city. Yeah, that oughta be it. Thanks, police.
Any, any other comments? Okay.
I'll make it, I'll make it real quick. I, uh, was, attended the Board of Works meeting this week, and, uh, brought up the fact of, uh, how that bid was, uh, bid was put out there for, uh, police cars, and I didn't agree with it, and I thought that, you know, they should have solicited bids for equipment, uh, but, but also, I would like to say that under prior administrations, the, uh, Board of Works would meet one day out of the month in the evening, so residents could attend, and one day, they would meet during, uh, um, their morning meeting. Uh, also, since we're talking about finances tonight, I would like to know why there was never any information, uh, brought forth when we were three point two or three point four million in the hole, and why there wasn't any backtracking, and I was thinking about it, because talking about the budget issues and, and everything, uh, that, we were also told we didn't have any money that year, so people didn't get raises. Okay. And we had a million dollars somewhere. But anyway, I think that there needs to be a paper chase to find out how we were three point four, or was it three point six, or three point two, but it was over three million dollars in the hole when we took, uh, office. Thank you.
Any other comments? We've broken protocol a couple times. Any other comments? Oh, well, um, I would say, well said, Councilman Mac, um, on, on just the, in general, you know, policing and community, and my brother's a law enforcement, uh, uh, person down in Florida, and he saw the video, and, um, again, uh, this, this young man should not be, um, uh, he shouldn't be going through what he's going through after the fact with the video, and, um, I just hope that as adults and, uh, people, um, that we just do better. So, with that being said, I, I'll call for adjournment. Awesome. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.